Okay, we are calling this October 2nd meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise and join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, City Manager, do we have any late changes to the agenda?
No late changes, Mayor Protam, thank you.
Thank you, all right, moving on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up online or in person to?
Do you want me to call roll?
Oh, sorry, roll call, let's go back to roll call.
Okay. Mayor Protam Wall.
I'm here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Present.
Councilmember Murray.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Councilmember Ryan.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
And Councilmember Page asked to be excused.
Do we have a motion to excuse? Councilmember Sonmore moves to excuse, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, all right, Councilmember Page is excused. So now, we'll move into general comment, public comment. Do we have anybody signed up online or in person?
Yes, so first to speak in person would be Audrey Reed, and you'll have five minutes. You can sit here.
Okay, my name is Audrey Reed, and I live across the street in the Plaza, Mount Lake Terrace Plaza, which is a place, we don't call it that, but it's an old folks home. And the first thing I wanted to talk about was the very, well, many of the people, including me, I guess, have some limitation on our ability to walk and walk on unsafe surfaces. And we're terribly concerned about the, in order to get from where we live to the library or here, you have to walk along a bunch of sidewalks that's been heaved up by these inappropriate trees. There's, what are they called? Tulip trees, tulip. And they're a kind of tree that grows to a giant size with very, with giant roots. And I'll be not surprised at all if it starts, they start heaving up the road. And I thought it was really sad that there's one person who I want, who said she wanted to go to the library, but when I asked, is it okay if we both go to the library, she said, no, no, this, your friend here can't, it's too dangerous for fall risk with the way the sidewalk is. And I mean, ideally, it seems to me, we take down those trees and plant some kind of tree that doesn't grow so huge. But because tulip trees, that's what they do, they grow huge. And the other, the other subject I wanted to mention, which apparently the city manager is going to look into, is the signage, the sign that's for the library, it used, it says library, but it's been painted in such a way that you can't even read it at all, because it's the same name, same color as the background. That sign and the sign for this building here have the same problem. You can't, you look, it doesn't say library or Town Hall or whatever, civic campus. And I hope that you can repair both of these problems. The end.
Thank you, we'll have the city manager follow up.
Next is Paula Guyen.
Hi, I'm Paula Guyen, I live across the street at MBK Plaza. I've been there eight years, and I love it, but I'm sad about the crosswalk from that, from there to the library. It's very dangerous. I almost got hit by a car the other day. If I didn't put my cane up to show the driver that I'm trying to walk across the crosswalk, I would have gotten hit. And the mayor hasn't done anything about it, as far as I know. But I'm hoping that you guys will look into it a little bit further. If maybe we could get like the lights on 58th and 236th, we can get across there with the lights. Would it be a lot better and safer? But I heard the mileage is supposed to only be 25 miles. You wouldn't believe how fast those cars come up and down that hill, because I can hear them coming. When I lived on the second floor, it was very scary then, and that, I was on the second floor, but now I'm on the third floor of the Plaza. So if somebody would look into it, that would really be appreciated, because somebody's going to get hit. I can assure you that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and again, we'll have the city manager follow up with you guys. Appreciate your being here tonight. All right, Jennifer, next.
Next is Paul Nerantik. You'll have five minutes at the podium, and if you could state your area of residence, that'd be great.
My name is Paul Nerantik, thanks for giving me this opportunity. We own a couple of properties here in Mount Lake Terrace. We currently live in Lake Forest Park ourselves, but so, just wanted to thank you guys for giving me this opportunity. The reason why we're here is we do own a couple of homes that are right on 56th out here by the Atlas Building, 236th and 56th, just north of that. So the homes, there's like four homes just north of that that I want to talk about a little bit this evening. We, like everyone else in Mount Lake Terrace, would love to beautify the town, we love the community. Got lots of friends here, some family as well. So several months ago, in terms of this revitalization project about widening 56th, the city had asked us to, well, we're in negotiations with the city basically to, for all the property owners along 56th, between 236th and 232nd, where they're going to do the widening of the street, to, they're going to compensate some of the landowners for taking part of the land, because they want to put some bike lanes, widen the sidewalks, and really beautify the city. And so we're in the middle of negotiations, and next thing we know, and we thought we were in good faith negotiations with the city, but next thing we know, we, the offer was rescinded that the city had laid out. We were right in the middle, so we were like kind of dumbfounded, thinking, oh, what the heck, I don't know what's going on with this. So I thought the whole project was done, they're not doing it. Couple weeks later, I hear that the project was still on, but they just avoided four properties, the ones that were right next to Atlas Building, north. And so my concern was, first of all, it would look very kind of tacky if the city only did like three quarters of the job, you know, between 236th and 234th, the widening. And we just, we weren't sure why they pulled the plug on it. We do know that there is one gentleman that's actually next door to our house, it's in the middle of the block. Apparently, he never responded to the city at all. And so maybe they're thinking, well, he's in the middle of the block, so, you know, he doesn't want to do it. And so we're just gonna, just that whole swath, all four of those lots, we're just going to forget about them and just keep the sidewalks narrow like they are now. But after all this, you know, recension and stuff from the, from the offer, I actually finally got a hold of this guy, and I literally had to go to his house 12 times, he didn't even, doesn't, not even staying in the house on 56th. He's staying at another house, his daughter's house, about half a mile up on 56th. Anyway, I finally found him after about 12 times staking him out. And to make a long story short, I had a long discussion with him, and he said he'd be in favor of, I told him about the whole situation. He said he would be in favor of taking the city's offer on this whole, on the project. And so that's kind of where we're at, and I've been working with our consultant, but I haven't heard back from him or the city yet. So that's, that's kind of where we're at, and I'm just hoping that the city reconsideres this, because it would look quite tacky for the city to only do three quarters of this project and just kind of piecemeal it together, it would just look funky. And it's already hard enough to get developers to come to Mount Lake Terrace as it is, so that would be my main concern. There, it's already hard enough, and it's, I think it would just be a real detriment to the city to just kind of piecemeal this project together. So that's all I have, and I know Paul here, my friend, he's, he's the one to own some other properties right next door to Atlas too.
Thank you, we'll have the city manager, yeah, touch base with you and keep you updated.
Next is Paul Haugen, you have Haugen, if you'll state your city or area of residence, please.
Yeah, I'm Paul Haugen, and I also have property right next to the other Paul in Mount Lake Terrace. And it's the same topic, so I'm not going to spend as much time, but we were just caught off guard when the city kind of out of the blue rescinded the offer. And it's more the fact that it's going to look extremely incongruent to have the sidewalk, just have the four lots, four properties where the, it's not, it doesn't make any sense. I think what bothered us the most is there was no warning, there was no opportunity to come back to say, hey, this is, we're going to have to move on if you can't agree, it just came out of the blue. So we were a little bit, and to add to Paul's point, both of us have been wanting, we're very pro-development, and we've been wanting to develop that block. Now, I bought the property in 2015, I have not been able to find one builder, and I've worked with multiple real estate agents that will build there because of the zoning. Nobody will touch it, and so I thought as time would go by, that would change, but unfortunately, that's not the case. So that's a bigger discussion that maybe we should discuss at another meeting. But I do think, for the record, that the city needs to look at that. I think we need more middle housing in the town center, and I think that block should, needs to be down zoned to more of a townhome, a townhome block, because they've already allowed two townhomes in that block. So the developers that have looked at it, even next door, the builder of the Atlas Building, he said they would be, would have been very happy to build north, but there's not enough continuous lots. They need at least six lots. So, and that's, that's if you get every property owner to agree to sell. So anyway, the Main Street revitalization project is important, because the builders also don't want to, it's already hard enough, and now they look at that, and it's like, oh, this is another expense we're going to have to bear. It's just, and it just would look extremely tacky, and unprofessional, so that's all I have for today, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Paul, appreciate you guys being here and bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Okay, the last person is Adam Sekay, and he is online. Adam, you'll have five minutes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I'm here to talk about Flock again. So last week's meeting just left a bad taste in my mouth. On the bright side, I had the pleasure of watching a number of Mount Lake Terrace residents deliver really impassioned, meticulously researched cases against Flock to the council. It made me so proud and thankful to live here among so many kind, empathetic people who care about injustice and the health of our community. But then what was the council's response? Total silence, and then inexplicably an action item to speak to pro-Flock police chiefs for their input. So why are you dismissing your residents and everything we know about Flock, instead actively seeking out biased perspectives to justify moving forward with Flock? It's a classic example of confirmation bias. I want to be very clear, you were all elected to represent the people of Mount Lake Terrace, not the Mount Lake Terrace Police, not the police chiefs of neighboring towns. At this point, it's clear that a number of council members are acting more as representatives of the police, and dare I say, functionally more as representatives of Flock itself than as representatives of our residents. You can claim, as you did in last night's meet, the candidates meeting, that you walk around speaking to Mount Lake Terrace residents and no one's against Flock, but I ask you, when you do this, do you fill them in on the facts about Flock? Or do you innocently present it as a crime fighting tool? I can guarantee you that if you told people the facts that have presented, that have been presented at city council meetings, the town would overwhelmingly oppose Flock and be aghast that you'd even be considering it. So let's review those facts now. One, Mount Lake Terrace does not have a serious or worsening crime problem, it just doesn't. Two, Flock is unconstitutional. Three, Flock has an extensive history of lying to towns. Four, Flock has already been caught lying to you. Five, Flock has an extensive history of providing data to federal agencies that illegally stalk, beat, terrorize, kidnap, and even kill residents and workers, and then lying about it. Six, Flock has an extensive history of dishonoring accountability agreements with towns. Seven, Flock leaves towns open to costly lawsuits, it's happening across the country. Eight, Flock is actively suing towns themselves for trying to rein in its lawless behavior. All of this is all out in the open, but despite all of this, you're still considering moving forward with them? You're ignoring all of this and saying, well, let's ask a pro-Flock police chief what they think. If a list like that doesn't send you running from Flock, is there anything at all that will? It's honestly disgraceful. If anyone is still considering moving forward with Flock, the kindest and most diplomatic thing I can say is that you're objectively not fit to lead this community. The people of this town will remember it come election time. They'll remember that at a pivotable, at a pivotal moment in history, you invited fascism into our town instead of fighting it, and use our tax dollars to do it. They'll remember that you endangered assault, we deserve better.
Thank you, Adam. Do we have any others signed up?
That concludes public comment.
Very good, thank you. Thank you all, appreciate you being here and sharing your thoughts with us. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Anyone?
Yeah, I, what is it, a motion to approve, I approve, what is it, I'm blanking right now.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I moved to approve the consent agenda, sorry, I just brain farted.
Very good, all right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items A, B, and C, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Councilmember Woodard will present.
Thank you, sir, and let that be proof we are listening. What an absolute honor, of course, a horrible cause to have to be here, but an honor to stand here. I'm very proud that every, every step along my career, I have been on the right side of fighting domestic violence, so to be the one to offer the proclamation is a humbling opportunity. Daniel Sing Sun, if you'd like to join me now at this point, she is our domestic violence coordinator. She wakes up, goes to bed, keeps it at it, and makes sure that folks who have experienced this horrible, horrific crime are heard and are taken care of, so thank you for that work you do day in and day out. City proclamation, Mount Lake Terrace, 36th anniversary of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control, including abuse to children and the elderly, and whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group, but cross all economic, racial, and social segments of our society, and whereas all people, regardless of gender, must recognize the scope of this social problem and work together to create a community that does not tolerate domestic violence, and whereas the city of Mount Lake Terrace encourages all residents to take a stand against domestic violence in their personal relationships and in our community, now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, on behalf of the Mount Lake Terrace City Council, proclaim October 25th as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, proclaimed by this city council October 2nd, 2025, our deepest honor.
Thank you, council, for having me in for the proclamation. We've been doing this many, many, many years, and it still rings emotional for me that, A, the city still continues to take the issue of domestic violence so seriously. We still set funds aside to make sure that a position like mine is funded, but also to do the outreach that we do in the community. This year is our 18th year of the Purple Light Nights campaign. So if any of you are Mount Lake Terrace residents, and you would like a purple light bulb to shine in your porch or in your house, please let me know before I leave today, or stop by the police department anytime this month. We have a limited supply that's available to the public at no cost, and we're happy to supply that for you, so you can show your support for victims of domestic violence. And we're also very honored every October to put magnets on all of our patrol cars. So if you see the patrol cars roaming around, you should see a purple ribbon on the back of that patrol car to honor domestic violence survivors. And again, thank you to council for the proclamation, I appreciate each and every one of you. Thanks. Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. Yeah, let's have a light bulb. Do you want to do the box, or do you want to?
Either way.
Okay, we'll do the box.
Hey, we are ready to move on to the review, public hearing, and vote on the ordinance adopting the transportation impact fees with our city engineer, Rich Meredith, and traffic engineer, John Merrick.
Thank you, council. We spoke last week at the study session about our proposed revisions to the traffic impact fee program. I'm going to go through our presentation again. I revised it a little bit and reduced, or removed a few slides that we covered last week. Again, the purpose of this report is to update our traffic impact fee analysis and the project list that we use to compute the fee, and making sure that it's, follows our Vision 2044 comprehensive plan. We're going to go through the background and the type of projects, why we're updating the program, some of the mechanics to give you an idea of how we're calculating the fee, and the projects, and the TIF rate comparison. So the council goals, the traffic impact fee touches basically all of our council goals. The vibrant community, because it's helping us manage our growth and provide more opportunities for the transportation network. Responsible governance, because we're trying to maintain or exceed our level of service. We're working with the community through our open houses and communications to keep them informed. And by providing more alternative transportation options, we are, you know, trying to be as environmental, sustainable, and resilient as possible. The history of this, of the traffic impact fees, the last time this was updated was in 2016. In 2018, we updated the index that we use to provide the annual updates. And then in 2024, we made an amendment to account for some of the low income exemptions. So an impact fee is a one-time charge paid by new development to contribute, contribute to our infrastructure. It was outlined in the 1990 Growth Management Act, which set the parameters that we have to operate under. The projects that, that a traffic impact fee can fund are projects that add capacity and growth to the transportation system. The traffic impact fees cannot be used to fund facilities that only address existing deficiencies. The traffic impact fees expire after 10 years, so if the city hasn't applied the traffic impact fees that we've collected within 10 years, then we have to refund them. There's four types of impact fees that are authorized. There's fire impact fees, park impact fees, school impact, impact fees, and the transportation fees that we're talking about. So we're revising the way we calculate our traffic impact fees. The previous program only looked at vehicle trips. And the change that we're proposing now is to convert our vehicle trips to person trips. And this is significant, because our, by just basing your improvements on vehicle trips, you're not really accounting for the switch in transportation modes. We're trying to get more people walking and biking and making more active choices, and plus, we're having to deal with reductions in parking allowed through the state, so. But with all those in place, trying to base your improvements only by vehicle trips is out of date. So the way that we're proposing to use our traffic impact fee now is more than just streets and roads, it's going to be the bike facilities and bike paths. It'll be some rideaway acquisition needed for some of the construction projects that are adding capacity and growth. There'll be signal and intersection upgrades still, and other pedestrian facilities. So why are we updating the program? We need to make sure that our fees reflect our current needs and growth. It needs to align with our current plans, including the Vision 24, 2044. And overall, we're trying to provide a safer, more accessible multimodal transportation system. The mechanics for how we decide how much of a traffic impact fee can be collected from a project, we'll start with a list of projects, and then we have to determine of the list of projects, is there elements of the project that are for capacity, or is it just more of safety and maintenance? If it is just safety and maintenance, and it's not adding any capacity or growth to the project, it would not be eligible for reimbursement or coverage by the traffic impact fee. For the projects that have added capacity... For the projects that have added capacity, we look at the portion of the cost of that project that would be due to new growth and the portion that addresses other issues with the project or other elements of the project. And so for the portion of the project estimate that's due to new growth, we will separate that out and then we'll look to see is the growth due to projects and elements outside of the city or is it just for the city? Once we've trimmed down that original estimate to the portion of the project that is just related to growth, capacity improvements, then we will look at the number of person trips that we have in the city based on our 2044 comprehensive plan. And so we will take, or we take the eligible costs that are left over from the capacity elements only, divide by the growth in the trips, and that's how we come up with the cost per person trip. And I know that's complicated and it's a big mouthful, but it, that's what we've done behind the scenes to try to come up with an easy way to calculate these fees in the future. So here's an example of how we use, how we apply the formulas that we just talked about. And it's where we're taking the project cost times, it's one minus the existing deficiency percentage, times the percentage of the growth within the city helps us to arrive at that impact fee eligible cost. Here's an example of one of the projects. We had the Vanryde Boulevard Bufford Bike Lane. The project cost itself, we estimated at 1.4 million. The deficiencies that we're subtracting out of that are 60%. So that leaves us with 40, 75 times the percentage of growth within the city is how we end up with an impact fee eligible cost of 420. And if I'm going too fast, please let me know because I can certainly pause or answer questions. So the way the program's working is when a bill, the fees are determined when the permit is issued. The fee is collected when the permit is issued, but there, as John explained last week, there is an opportunity for deferral up to the point where we issue a certificate of occupancy. And Mayor Protam Wall has a question.
Thank you, Rich. Actually, council member Woodard has a question.
Oh, yes. If you wouldn't mind going back to the equation slides. Either one works, that one or the one before it. Maybe the one before it actually, that will make this one make sense to me. So one more slide. Yeah, that one. So I guess the question that we should ask is, is this industry standard or is this an interpretation of what this city needs kind of based off of industry standards? Like, are you cobbling this together or would we be able to look somewhere else and you'd see this same overlay for that city?
This is the industry standard.
Okay.
If you look at other jurisdictions, later on, we'll have the slide of jurisdictions that have impact fees. The, this process is, I think, goes back to the GMA and how we can figure out what is eligible for cost for the calculation.
Okay, thank you. I figured that was the case, but it dawned on me. We should ask.
Just to finish up this slide, an applicant can request a credit for the value of dedicated land improvements or other fees for the, for projects that are on one of the, or for a development that's on one of the project list routes. And so the elements that are related to the growth aspects of their project, we can give them a credit for dedicated land or any widening that they've had to do portions of their project. So this is a list of the projects. There's a map there that kind of highlights all the projects that we use to calculate the TIF. I wasn't going to go through all the project at this point because we went through them last week, but if anybody has any questions, I would love to stop and go over that if we want. So this is a slide we showed last week of the TIF rates comparison. It's a partial listing. I included the report from MRSC as one of the attachments to the materials. But as our consultant Fear and Peers pointed out last week, this list is kind of a mix of vehicle trip impact fees and person trip impact fees. So they're not apples to apples for all of these. So what you see up here is what is currently their traffic impact fee rate, but they're not always based off the same methodology. A lot of these jurisdictions are in the process of updating them, just like we're doing tonight. So this next slide is an example of comparing just the person trip-based impact fees. And what we did was we looked at the neighboring jurisdictions for how the impact fee would look just for one single family dwelling in it. And so you can see that while we're recommending a TIF fee of 6,051 per trip, the way that works or would equate to a single-family household charge, because there's more than one trip, one person, there's more than one person trip assigned to that type of development, your fee would work out to be, in this case, 8160. And you can see how that measures up with some of the other local jurisdictions. This slide here is just again, the way the construction cost index rate has increased over the, since 2009. The construction cost index is different than the CPI in that it's related more to construction activities. And for example, this last year, the construction cost index is 5.9%. The CPI in Seattle was three. So sometimes the construction cost index is higher and sometimes it's lower. We held some of the open houses and this is just listing the open house we had on the 20th. And this is where our community engagement focus was. We hosted comments on the website and we held our open house and then we continued to look for any comments about our project list from the public. We didn't actually get any more new projects, so our project list, we felt, was pretty complete for what we had proposed. So I had some other slides that I don't see up here, but I had more of a comparison of the, of the different rates for the different trip. And I don't think they got into this version. But one thing I just wanted to point out is that with our new calculations, we started off basing all of our trips off of the 2000, the 12th edition of the Trip Generation Manual from ITE, which is a document that's used nationwide, but you have to buy it. And so we took the project list out of the ITE Trip Generation Manual and then it's based on vehicle trips. So we, or Fear and Peers, our consultant, converted the vehicle trips to person trips using PSRC data and deducting for pass-by trips also. So inside the report, the rate study report that we're asking for you to adopt tonight, we've got about six pages of the different rate tables for the different types of developments and how they would be applied. This way, a developer or somebody doesn't have to buy the Trip Generation Manual because we've already extracted all of those trip rates and put them in the report so that it's available to the public. But, and they've all been converted to person trips, not the vehicle trips that they would start off with in the Trip Generation Manual. So in the end, we're recommending, the staff recommends the city council authorize the adoption of the 2025 Transportation Impact Fee Rate Study conducted by Fear and Peers. And the staff recommends the city council adopt a transportation impact fee rate of 6,051 for 2026.
Thanks, Rich. And just FYI, the materials you're referring to are in the council packet. They're also in our presentation. Couple additional slides below the recommendation. So that information is available if anybody wants to refer back to it. But at this point, do we have any questions? Do I see anybody online? If not, then we are having a public hearing. So we are looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
You have a motion. Do we have a second to open the public hearing?
Second.
Thank you, council member Murray. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
There it is. All right. Public hearing is now open. Do we have anybody signed up for the public hearing?
No one has signed up for public testimony.
Okay, no testimony on this, so we are ready to, unless there's anybody, anybody? All right, we are ready to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. All right. Public hearing is now closed. We are now looking to put a motion on the table to adopt the 2025 Transportation Impact Fee Rate Study and ordinance modifying the transportation impact fee rate for 2026. Do we have a motion?
Can we just say so moved? Good lord, that was a lot.
We have a motion on the table, council member Woodard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second with council member Saumar. Thank you. All right, any discussion on the motion? Council member Woodard?
Not discussion, just a comment. I'm not going to pretend to say I understand 80% of this. I'm at about the 70 mark, which is passing. That said, I do want to acknowledge, thank you for the work. This is clearly a lot of work and very thoughtful. The converting that to adjust, it made me think of how we've been trying to do that with the gas tax, right, where we just have to recognize that the world has changed and how we monitor it or monetize it, how we want to look at it. We should be making those adjustments as well, but try to be fair in that process. And from what I can tell, this seems reasonable. That's why I was asking about the industry standard. It seems like we're not going to set ourselves up for developers to say, well, that's just too much. We're not coming here if you're going to be charging me that type of impact fee, right? Because we got to all stand together and move forward and be reasonable. And I just want to applaud you all. That was probably hard to do in this situation because there's a lot of unknowns. But from at least my standpoint, it appears to be as best we can get. So thank you for that work.
Thank you, council member Woodard. Any other comments? Council member Saumar?
Thank you. I just want to ask one question. In the ordinance, I just want to make sure I understand what the red highlight means. It's GG, low-income household, meaning houses with monthly housing expenses that is no greater than 30% of the 80% of the median family income adjusted for family size. So if they're building something different, then their rate would be different?
We added that definition from, it's from the state. So there's some other references to the low-income housing you'll find in some of the RCWs. And so we wanted to make sure that we replicated the definition in our code because we're, that's where we have our definitions for what we've referred to. So I can't say that we're using that definition or where we're using it right off the top of my head, but I wanted to make sure that we tried to be proactive with our updates to the code to account for what we were seeing in the RCW.
Can I just ask though, does that adjust then what we're taking in? So if somebody builds something, a low-income household, meaning houses, how do you apply that?
We've, we've got, Christie's probably a better person to answer that, but we've got some ordinances and mechanisms in place to give credit for lower-income housing that developers can choose to take.
And I understand that that's all primarily what we're looking at in the city of Mount Lake Terrace. I've heard that over and over again from the public and from just everything. It's, we're trying to get more low-income housing in the city. So how does that affect the overall rates?
Well, for the impact fee, the rates are going to be built into the rate table that was in the report. And what we've done with the impact fees is account for the ADUs, where we have to expand our single-family lots to include ADUs. And there's limitations on what the reduction would be for that. As to what qualifies for low income, I can't answer that right now.
Wouldn't low income mean, we already have that structure of how much they, when they're building something, we're usually told what kind of housing that is. So that's where I was asking because...
Yeah, all I did there was add that definition in there. And so if somebody is proposing a development and they meet the elements of that definition, then we could consider what portion of their project that applied to. But again, I'm not an expert on how those mechanisms would work.
Let me turn it over to the city manager to be able to help answer it.
Affordable housing, we have the multifamily tax exemption as part of our affordable housing program. That defines affordable as 80% or below of area median income. Most of those definitions across state law, state and Washington Administrative Code typically match up. So I think by putting that definition into this traffic ordinance, we're being proactive. So get ahead of that so we don't have to come back and change it later.
Thank you. Does that help answer question, council member Saumar?
I understand the median range and the percentage, but I just didn't know how it applied to the overall ordinance that we put in here. I understand that this is from the state. I just wanted to know how it impacted our city and what it meant.
Okay. Thank you, council member Saumar. Do we have any other, any other discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none, I guess we will call for the question. All those in favor of adopting the 2025 Transportation Impact Fee Rate Study and ordinance modifying the transportation impact fee rate for 2026, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you all. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. Great work.
Thank you very much.
All right. So then moving on to, we are now reviewing and considering the award to award contract for the City Hall Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Project. for the City Hall Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Project with our Recreation and Parks Director, Jeff Betts. Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation and Parks Director for the city. And as mentioned, we are here to talk about the bid award for electric vehicle charging So the purpose of that will be to review and vote tonight on this bid award. And so it's for electric vehicle charging stations, not only at the Civic Campus, but it's also for some infrastructure at the operations facility. So tonight's agenda will be to demonstrate council goals related to the subject, a summary of this subject, design and approach, call for bids, the timeline, finances and budget, the staff recommendation, as well as take any questions that you may have. So the related council goals for this item are responsible governance to ensure desired levels of service. And then kind of some of the subgoals in there would be to identify efficiencies and opportunities, reduce the cost of government, and also to increase partnerships to leverage city resources. And then an important one for this, too, would be the environmental and sustainability and resiliency. So we want to try to prioritize our resources to improve climate resiliency through projects and programs. So legislative history for this project, on September 12th, 2024, council did approve a Commerce Grant for $90,000. And so this subject is mentioned, we're talking about charging stations, but it's for fleet vehicle charging stations, not public charging stations. There was a couple of different options as part of the grant program from Commerce. You could apply for fleet, you could apply for like a multifamily charging, and there was also like a public charger. So those were three different grant programs. We did apply for multiple and looked into potentially trying to add more public charging stations to city facilities, but the cost of the infrastructure to get some of the electricity and upgrade some of the infrastructure within each one of our facilities was extremely high. So we tried narrowing down to what our immediate needs were, and we did talk about this in general when we accepted the grant last, I understand that was a while ago, it was a year ago. But we did focus on the fleet vehicles and primarily because beyond the goals that we mentioned, also the state of Washington set a target for 2035 for all light-duty fleet vehicles to be changing over to electric or some combination of electric, whether it's hybrid or really just trying to promote efficiencies. So the city had already started to move towards electric vehicles, and we had a Ford Lightning and a couple other vehicles that needed some of that infrastructure in place. So this is the route we took. And we took a look at the Civic Campus and trying to figure out where we could install these chargers. And luckily enough, and we did have some foresight when we designed this place not very long ago, to have plenty of extra electrical capacity to make that happen. So there will be some pulling of wire, but it's through existing conduit, and we do have some space for these chargers, as well as the operations facility. That is a little bit older of a facility, and so we are almost maxed out on our capacity at that site, but we do have existing conduit, which is shown in this photo here, that we can pull through. It's just there's not as many breakers available down there. But as part of the Ford Electric Vehicle Program, we did receive some free Ford chargers. And so that was definitely a good thing for us to be able to receive because each one of those are a few thousand dollars at least. So in addition to the project that I'm outlining here, I'll show you a scope map of that, but we did receive $90,000 to help support the project. So the design of the project, when we received the grant, we did not have a full design or know how much exactly it was going to cost. We had a kind of a quick estimate that McKinstry put together. So we engaged with them to do some initial design, and they put together potential costs. And that's when we realized we couldn't afford full public and everything. We'd have to just try to invest in fleet. We took the actual design further with McKinstry, and they, this is kind of hard to see, I understand, but there is a site map here of the Civic Campus. So the red boxes would be where it was, where we're designing for those charging stations to be located. And there's several reasons why we chose those. A lot of debate ensued about where they should go exactly. And so this is where the existing city vehicles are parked in those locations. And originally, that was because that's where we had also had cameras and visibility on them as well. But it does make a lot of sense also because they seem close to the building, but they're also kind of, in a way, kind of out of the way. The middle of the parking lot is actually more accessible for both front doors. So we have, we're going to utilize existing conduit to get there. There'll be one saw cut that we have to make to get to the police station side to install these chargers. We also still will have existing capacity. We'll have capacity for future electric vehicles. And in addition, this allows us to have the same exact company doing our EV chargers right now, would be this new chargers, would be the exact same. So there's a electric vehicle dashboard, so to speak, where you can see how much people are charging, how often, and all kinds of related data. It also will allow us to have cards for fleet cards so staff can scan them, and we'll be able to get data on that, on how much each car is being charged and things like that for the fleet department. So there was a call for bids published. We published that September 2025 to the on-call roster, and we did receive three bids. And so those three bids were from AEG, and that bid was for $262,295. Schneider &amp; Son for $168,716. And then the apparent responsive low bid was $109,362 from Lights, Inc. So timeline for this project would be tonight, the council award of contract, and then soon thereafter, we would be executing the contract, and notice proceed would be given. There, in addition, we would have, construction would start immediately after that notice to proceed, and then final acceptance after all the scope elements been completed. So this project is grant-funded, as I mentioned, but we are reaching the end of that timeline. So we are working diligently to finish in time for the grant. So we've set a timeline to be done by the end of this month, and the contractor is on board with that. So they are getting ready to mobilize as soon as next week, if this is approved tonight. And we should be able to satisfy all the grant criteria at that point. So to review some of the finances and then the budget of the project, so as mentioned, we did engage with McKinstry. There was a two-part design process. The first one was a really technical audit, and it was to analyze ballpark costs so we could make determinations of what we wanted to move forward with. And so then we also took it, the second part of that would have taken it to full design so we could actually have plans to go to bid with. And then the next part of it, we've engaged with a company that would help us actually purchase those chargers and do the above groundwork of installing them. They're like a licensed contractor of that provider, of the actual provider of the EV. And they're called Puget Sound Solar. And then this item tonight is the actual underground electrical bid contract. So they would be pulling wire, as I said, and doing everything underground, kind of the make-ready kind of work. And then additionally, on the expenditure list here, you can see some contingency, that's 10% of the below-ground work, over $10,000. So then this project will be supported with, as mentioned, the Washington State Department of Commerce Grant of $90,000, and then funding from the capital improvement program, which is $180,000, $180,242, for a total amount of $270,242. So while we did go to council in September and council accepted that $90,000, the CIP funds are not in the budget, so we need to make sure that we're able to allocate those funds. And we would come back to when we do the actual budget amendment later this year, and that would be, show up in that, as well as for official council action for the amendment itself as well. So the staff recommendation is that council could allocate that $270,242 in funds, and that would be for the cost of the chargers and also for the construction and installation, which $90,000 is reimbursed via a grant. And then if council would then authorize the city manager to enter into that contract with Lights, Inc., in the amount of $109,362.23, I know that's a comma, but it's supposed to be a period, for the installation of electrical infrastructure. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Jeff, do we have any questions? Councilmember Saunmore?
How many vehicles right now does the city own that would use these?
How many do we have in stock? We've ordered some. I don't know the exact number of how many we've ordered. Maybe Deputy City Manager, City Manager knows that?
We have three on order currently.
Okay. And I believe that we have three current here, so three here and three on order.
Vehicles?
Vehicles.
Okay. And then, so how many do we have out there?
I think there's three right now. I think there's, or is there two or three?
Charging stations? There's one, two, and there's one...
Charging stations? So those are the public, the ones we have right now are for the public.
But these are going to be put in here, and some of them will be able to be used by the...
Those will just be fleet vehicles and won't be available to the public?
Twelve of them.
Correct.
And we only have three vehicles now, and three, are those three vehicles that you order replacing any of the three vehicles that we created?
No. No, they're...
So we need 12 charging stations? I'm asking because our budget is so bad, do we really need to have 12 stations and use all this money? I know $90,000 comes from a grant, but can we have six and not spend that money?
Yeah, the grant is predicated on the number of charging stations that we put in our application. So this is the number that we've scoped, that we intend to replace. It's not all going to be a one-year project, replacement project for those vehicles. Obtaining vehicles isn't always the easiest thing, and then we also have to kind of space out to purchase those vehicles, just as you mentioned, because of our budget itself. We were never intending to purchase all 12 of them, but it is in our plans to replace them as we go, to follow that Washington state edict on transferring into electric vehicles.
Thank you. And to clarify, this is coming from the capital improvement program...
It is.
...which is restricted to capital projects.
Correct.
Not the general fund.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay.
So this is one of our top priorities for that fund, then? And there's, it beats out everything else?
Well, I mean...
I'm trying to see what the priority is.
Right. I mean, one of the things that we try to do is seek out opportunities as well. And when we have funding sources that help leverage the ones that we have, then it's beneficial for us to kind of pursue those. And one of the things also that this project is doing that I didn't get a chance to mention I should have, is that one of our public charging stations is actually out of order, if you've noticed, and has been for a while. And so this project will also replace that single charger and add a dual charger there, so it'll be two more essentially than we have now, public chargers. And so that will be part of this installation because we need to replace it anyway. So it will add public charging capacity as well, which is really, really popular here at City Hall.
And again, to clarify, this is also helping fulfill our environmental sustainability council goal and helping us address climate change, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Saunmore?
Oh, and I'm not trying to shock anybody, but I'm going to be asking those questions. We're looking to cut six, five to six million dollars in our budget. I know we've talked about 1.5, and it could be even higher than that. So I think it's really prudent that we look at everything because some of the suggestions that are coming on what we should cut are really not the best suggestions I've seen. So I think that we need to look at all the different areas that needs to, we're spending money on.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Saunmore. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. Just, I guess, kind of a follow-up on Councilmember Saunmore's question in terms of, because we have, we're anticipating six electric vehicles that need charging currently, what's the like life cycle of the units that we're installing? Are we going to utilize them before we have to replace them?
Yes, absolutely. We had charging stations installed, I'm trying to remember how long ago that was, down at, down at the parking garage, a light rail, and that was probably at least 10 years ago. And so they're still functional down there right now, the charging station. So I mean, I don't know exactly the life cycle of them, but I would assume it's over 10 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Any further questions, discussion? Councilmember Woodard?
And just so I was clear, you said it was 2037 that the state said we need to switch over?
It's 2035.
Oh, so even closer. Yeah. Okay. So basically, within a decade, we are mandated to have more than the six vehicles that we currently will be having by the end of the year type of thing?
Correct. And the original date was at least 10 years earlier. I think they keep pushing it back because it's a goal that they're trying to meet as the state, they have a lot more vehicles also, so...
I guess I'm just trying to establish from where I'm sitting, we can expect in the next 10 years, any vehicle purchased would be hybrid or fully electric, if you will.
I believe that's the goal, is all light-duty vehicles. The heavy-duty, there's not really an option for right now. I mean, there's just not an electric option that can fulfill that need.
Yeah. I don't think we could afford that. So I'm like, thank goodness we didn't afford that. But the light duties, that makes more sense because light duty would be police cars, right? I mean, if we start, no, it would not.
Yeah. So the exception to that would be police vehicles. So we're talking code enforcement, you know, building inspector, inspectors, that kind of thing.
Okay. The trucks that our parks and recs folks are driving, are those considered light duty or heavy duty?
Those are light duty. There are some heavier-duty ones, but they have to tow trailers a lot of times. So that's kind of an in-between spot that we haven't really got to yet. So it's definitely personnel-carrying vehicles is what we're looking at right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. All right. I saw the mayor's hand go up, and I know Councilmember Saunmore had follow-up. If the mayor would like to go first, then we'll come back to Councilmember Saunmore?
No, I was just going to see if we have three on hand and three coming in, and then we're probably going to be replacing others as they go out with electric vehicles. So this is just getting ready for that so that we don't have to all of a sudden have five or six on hand, and then we have eight vehicles. So to me, this is just getting ready for what we have to get in the future. That's it. That's all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Saunmore?
And I'm just putting it out there with our budget being the way it is. I don't think we're going to be spending tons of money on vehicles over the next five to 10 years. I'm just throwing that out there just to be prepared. But how long does a charging station last? Because you already said that one over here is already not working, and we had that installed when this building was put up. So how long will those 12 last by the time we're able to fully utilize them?
I mean, the ones that I know that were the transit center were there for at least 10 years so far.
In where?
At the transit center. Because we installed some at the transit center, the city did, but at least 10 years ago.
And they're all, and do they still all have the copper in them?
Yeah. Yeah, they're being charged. We get bills for them still for those. So those are still operational. The one that I was mentioning that didn't work is something wrong with electrical at times. Some things go wrong with electrical units like that. One of the things that they said is just that that unit, something went wrong with it. It might still be under warranty. We're going to check into that. But we still want to replace it with that dual port instead of a single port. And so we're going to send that back and see if that charge point can take a look at the unit itself.
What do we do if, when somebody steals the copper out of them? I know that's been an issue in some of the areas. How much does it cost to replace? And with that money, are we setting money aside just in case for maintenance of that?
We've never had to replace copper in a charging station, so I'm not certain of that. I know that construction techniques themselves help kind of limit those type of things. These are sealed units themselves, so they can't be copper ripped out of them. But somebody would have to dig underground and try to get inside the conduit and that kind of thing to be able to do things like that.
Oh, it's not in the charging?
Right.
Oh, that's good to know.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunmore. Any further... Any final questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the electric vehicle charging station contract with Lights Inc. and to amend the budget, which will be formalized in a future budget amendment. Councilmember Woodard?
Let me see if I can try that. I thought I was going to just, I thought I was going to read this first one, which is, do we need to allocate the 270 first? Or did everything you say make that happen? Where's that? Oh, that's my problem. Where is that?
Staff report.
Thank you.
End of the staff report.
Thank you, sir. That's why I'm like, this is just too much. All right. I move to authorize the city manager to sign the electric vehicle charging station contract with Lights Inc. and to amend the budget to 243,342, which will be formalized in a future budget amendment. Look at that.
Second?
One point of order, one point real quick, is it's 270,242. I'm sorry. You're reading one, that's probably one that we amended.
So let me re-rig that.
Sorry about that.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the electric vehicle charging station contract with Lights Incorporated and to amend the budget to 270,242, which we formalize in a future budget amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Do we have a second?
Second?
All right. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Murray, thank you. All right. Any further discussion? If not, I will call for the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good. We have approved the motion. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, moving on to the next agenda item, which is to review and vote on ordinance adopting funds update with our finance director, Sirkei Solomon.
Okay, we're finance people, not PowerPoint people, so it'll be one second. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam and Council. I'd like to introduce Caitlin Renkey. She's a finance technician, and she'll be assisting with this presentation. So recently, we've taken a comprehensive look at our funds and will be recommending updates in order to better serve the public by being even more transparent. And especially during the budget process, because we discuss the funds quite a bit. These changes will also assist the departments in managing their projects and budgets. And then, last but not least, it'll be easier for the finance department to prepare the annual report for the state auditors. So also, to, the purpose today is to inactivate some of the funds that we no longer use and haven't used for years, and to change the type of funds and to add some new funds, for So we'll go through what is a fund and the different types of funds, and then our recommendations. So what is a fund? Fund is an accounting entity that is self-balancing and is for specific activities. So just to simplify it, we have a beginning balance, and you add revenues, and that equals your expenditures and ending balance. And that's what self-balancing stands for. So each fund is self-balancing. So types of funds. So we have three major types of funds. There are governmental funds, proprietary funds, and fiduciary funds. So within each major type of fund, we have, we have these other funds, the general fund under governmental, special revenue, debt service. Won't go through all of these because we'll go through them specifically later on in the presentation. But I want you to note the numbers beside them. So general fund has the three zeros. These are requirements by the state auditors. So every general fund, and there can be more than one, starts with a zero. All the special revenue funds starts, they start with one, debt service with two, and so forth, as you can see the numbers.
The general fund is the first one we're going over. This funds all our operations, less restrictions on our uses. Our PD, admin, and property manager, our property management are examples of departments paid out of the general fund. We currently only have one general fund. Special revenue funds, these funds have revenues that have restricted uses, changing, ensures transparency of restricted revenues. Street operations is an example of one of our special revenue funds.
Okay, so I'll go over all the funds in the recommendations. So these are all special revenue funds. Again, they start with one. The street fund, that's our regular street operating fund, and the recommendation is just keep it the same. Then we have a street construction fund. This really is a capital fund and should be in a capital fund, which starts with a three. So that is a recommendation to move them. We have the next two, art fund, tree fund, that would just stay the same. We have the next five, the housing needs fund, contingency fund, all of these are right now in a special revenue fund, but we're recommending to move it to a general fund. Now, I want to state that these still are restricted funds. They do not change. Each one will still have a beginning balance, revenues, expenditures, and ending balance. But the end of the year, these are all rolled up into the general fund for the annual report anyways. So it makes it easier for us to roll those up when they're already, I don't want to call them a sub-fund, because they are a general fund and they are their own fund. So we see these normally in the general fund.
Councilmember Sonmore?
I'd like to beg to differ just a little bit. Our strategic reserve fund has always been not in the general fund on purpose because I know you said it would be restricted, but it should be 5% of our general fund. Can you tell me how much is in it right now?
I don't have the number for you.
And then why would we move it to the general fund? Because that makes it too easy for us to spend, especially when our general fund's going down, because we specifically put that fund together in case we had an earthquake, in case we had a disaster, something that we have to have, we're already using all of our reserves, and I just think it's a really bad idea to put it in the general fund.
So when I say it's in the general fund, it is not in the general operating fund that we talk about normally. It is still its own fund. At the end, right now, currently, at the end of the year, it is in the general fund in the annual report, and it has always been. So this just makes it easier, and it's still a separate fund. It still acts as a strategic reserve fund, as a contingency fund. It's exactly the same. But we do roll it up at the end of the year, and so we don't have to go through hoops. And, and, and it's not through hoops as in any, any law or anything, but in the accounting sense. The 100 funds are in different areas. We have to, you know, spreadsheets. And so it's, there's no change except for the number, really.
So to real quick, quick clarify, it's, it's not changing the restriction on the funding that's in that line item. So for instance, I had concerns on the housing needs fund as an example, and making sure that that goes to affordable housing, making sure that that, the amount that we have, I believe is like $250,000, goes to affordable housing. But this is really just an accounting and trying to help clarify for the public, the funding, but it, that it does not change the restriction on those, on the funding or the money, that's the revenues that are in each of those line items. So it's just kind of changing how it is, where it appears and how, and your accounting codes and things like that, but not changing the restriction. So in other words, I appreciate Councilmember Sonmore's concern about the strategic reserve fund, for instance. I mean, that is a, by code, in our own code, a, I believe it's code, but it's certainly our policy, that, that we have 5% set aside for strategic reserve fund in our budget. But that does not, by making this, this does not change that in any way. It's just same thing with the housing needs. That does not change those, the fact that the $250,000 roughly that are in, in the housing needs fund would be allocated for anything other than for housing needs and affordable housing.
Correct.
Correct.
Exactly. This is just the accounting portion of it. It does not change any of these funds in any way. The money that is already in there stays in there unless there's a budget and the council approves that it is moved for whatever reason. And it's part of the budget, you'll see it separately in the budget, you'll see the balances, beginning, ending, and all the movement within it. It does not, it is not incorporated into that general fund that we normally talk about where police and parks and finance and, and all the operating. It's a separate fund.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore?
Yes, and you brought that up, so I'll just ask, was the 2025, 2026 biannual budget, was that incorporated using the adopted financial policies?
I'm sorry?
Was the 2025, 2026 budget developed using our financial policies?
Yes.
And so could we get a copy of what's in the strategic fund and what other things have been, how it's been used?
Sure. I don't think it's been used at all right now. Yeah.
But, so then that answers, so then there should be 5% going into it at all times then, right? Strategic fund, because that's in our adopted policy set.
Yeah, I think that our budget shows it in, in the bottom line, right? It has the 5%.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I think, I think we've found resolution with the move, but I just kind of wanted to hear it in my own ears since I was just with our auditors, with you all. Was that yesterday? Goodness gracious. So I want to put it in their eyes. I think the word I'm looking for here is safeguard, right? So where it currently sits as a 100 instead of in the general fund zero, would the auditor consider it being in 118, currently where it is, 118, would they consider that a safeguard? Or would they not even think the move is a matter? Does that make sense? Like, is it considered because it is one removed and you do have to quote unquote, call it a hoop, let's see with the imagery? Is that considered a safeguard in their eyes? Or would they say that's got nothing to do with anything? Because again-
To move it into the general fund?
Yes, if we made this adjustment.
So as far as the auditors, it is in the general fund in our annual report. We are, we are allowed to move it into the general fund. That's how it is in the annual report.
So they wouldn't balk at, is what you're saying?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
No.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. If there's no other questions on this slide, we'll let Sirkei continue. All right? Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so I think we left off on the American Rescue Plan Act. We will be expending the funds by next year, so we want to just leave that, and then we'll come back at another time, and we'll inactivate it when we've used the funds. Another one we'd like to add, the opioid settlement fund. We have a large amount of funds coming in for the opioid settlement, and we want to keep that separate, so it's very clear where we're using it. We have restrictions on it, and I think it's a good idea to keep it separate. Right now, it's coming into the general fund, but as a line item. There's a 50th birthday fund. I have no idea what that is. I'm thinking that's probably 20 years old, and we'd like to inactivate, inactivate it. Hotel motel tax, we want to keep that the same. Then there's the solid waste. Now, this is the discount program, and the solid waste money that comes in the tax comes into the general fund. And normally, this is in a general fund. It will stay as a separate fund again, so that we, we will have a budget for it and that we can pay for that discount program.
Our debt service funds, these are funds that are used to serve, service principal and interest for debt in the general fund only. Capital and enterprise debts are separate.
So we have two funds currently, and if anybody wants to guess which one is our debt service fund and which is not, I think that's pretty obvious. I have no idea what the racquetball reserve fund is. It does not have anything in it, and I can guarantee you, we did not have any debt for racquetball. So there is one strike, and I think that's out. So that is the only change on the debt service.
If you go back-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Yeah, I was just going to ask about the first 50th. Thank you. Birthday fund, and that was for our 50th. We had a huge celebration. We had all the former mayors, and it was huge. Is there anything in that budget? Because we've talked about removing that for years.
There is nothing in the budget.
I was so surprised it was still there.
Yeah, it still comes up on all of our reports. Yeah.
So all the funds that say inactive do not have any monies in them at all?
No. No activity in them.
Yeah, and there's, there's no funds in them, no activity, there's been no activity.
Not in this. There, there is one, and I'll point it out when we get to it.
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you. Carry on.
Capital projects funds, these funds are used for construction, acquisition, or major improvements of capital assets, commonly funded by bonds, grants, and dedicated taxes. Projects often span multiple years and budgets.
Okay. So just to clarify also, these will not have the utility funds in it. So the capital projects for utility funds are completely separate. So the first one's capital improvement fund, and the only thing we'd like to do is change the title to Parks Capital Improvement, since it really is Parks Fund. Real estate excise tax, keep it the same. Facilities, construction, keep that the same. What we would like to add is fleet reserve and capital reserve funds. So the next four funds, because we want to consider it like the savings account. We want to reserve for all the large projects and equipment, large equipment, fleet. So we want to set aside money for that. Currently, we, we have set aside money, but it is in a fleet fund for, for equipment, and we want to separate, separate that out so that it's clear.
Yeah, that was my question.
Councilmember Sonmore?
For the capital improvement, if it's parks, then where's the facilities and transportation? So, because it's, we, every few years, I don't know, we move these funds around, and it, for council, it's kind of unnerving because it's like, are we hiding money over there? Or, you know, because it's like, what was wrong with it to begin with? And so can you explain again, the capital improvement fund? It's, you're changing the titles to the Parks Capital, but there's a separate one for facilities and a separate one for transportation?
So currently, we have a separate one, facilities, which is up there. That's our current one. The Parks has been used for parks, and the ones for utilities, they, the number starts with a four because they're all utility funds. So it's a requirement. It's not something that we're changing just to change. But we have, there are requirements by the state auditors where funds should be. The ones that we're adding, the reserve funds, those are because we want to be more transparent. Right now, they're in an ending fund balance, and that makes it difficult to track. So these would make it a lot easier to track and be more transparent. Yeah, and we, in next, I think the next slide, we'll see the utility funds and the projects in there. So.
Good. Councilmember Sonmore?
Oh, yeah.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Then we have this- Then we have this fire construction fund. That we'd like to inactivate. That does not have any activity in it anymore. Then next to our impact fees, and this is actually perfect because Rich was talking about the transportation impact fees. And that, those currently come into the street funds. And we'd like to separate that so we can keep better track of it. And like he said, we need to use it within 10 years. And we want to make sure that we we are pretty transparent.
Permanent funds. These funds are you, these are funds that the government cannot use any of the original amount. They can only use interest from the funds. An example of a permanent fund is an endowment given to the city.
So currently, these are under our permanent funds. And none of these are actually permanent funds. And they have no activity. I believe they've been paid off. They have been paid off. And so we need to inactivate them. And we do not have any permanent funds. City does not hold any.
I'll go deliver that cane over to that woman. I know the woman who came, sorry, came in. He's putting the cane away. I'm sure she probably needs it. I can bring it over. But she has, she just talked about how hard it was to walk over here. That's why I was saying I could just drop it off. I was worried about her walking home, so that's why I wanted to ask. Sorry for interrupting.
Enterprise and internal fund, service funds. The enterprise funds are treated like a business. Revenues are taken in and used to pay for the services billed. Water, sewer, and stormwater are enterprise funds. And our internal service funds are exactly that. They pay for the services within the government. Fleet is an example of our internal service funds.
Okay, so we'll start out with the enterprise funds. Sewer, water, storm, the first three are just operating funds. The next three are the construction funds for each one of those. And then the next two are, actually, all of the rest are loans. They're bonds and loans. So the first two have a separate fund. We'd like to add 2012 to the title because that's what the revenue bond is. And it just makes it easier. And the next ones, we'd like to add each, each of those, they're a separate loan. And it's so much easier to track. And we have to report these separately to the state auditors in our annual report. And so it makes that reporting easier. And then the recommendation, here's where we have the fleet reserve and the capital reserve for all the utility funds, to keep them separate and make sure that we're putting money away for any capital projects or any large pieces of equipment. And again, it's being more transparent and it's easier to track. Currently, for the internal service funds, we have the fleet management. And as we talked about in the budget, it was an internal, the IT, information, technology. We're moving it to the internal service funds as we've discussed during the budget process. It's a service to the rest of the city, so it makes sense to have it in an internal service fund.
Custodial funds. This money does not belong to the city and cannot be used for city operations. These are passed through accounts where we collect the money and pay another entity for a service or fee. Examples are property tax and some of our permits.
Property tax.
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
We missed that.
Sales tax.
So currently, we have, the first two, we do not use. And the fireman's pension will need to come later for an amendment on that. But there is like $1,000 in there. I'm I'm not sure. I've tried to go back. Don't see anywhere where that, why that is in there. Sometimes I think it maybe its interest was put in at some, I have no idea, really. I-
Councilmember Sonmar?
You brought that up. We did have a pension for two of our firefighters that were, let me see how I explain it. Their pension went up and we weren't, I know, I know one of the firefighter's names. But the pension went up and we needed the extra funds. So we put aside some extra funds because they weren't getting paid enough in their pension. And that might be it from a long time ago. Of course, we, when we had our own fire district. But this is, we were paying a certain pension to two of our specific firefighters. And I can give you a name at the end.
And for, somewhere, I want to say I've seen the movement of money that has gone when, when, I think it was when all of that ended. But I don't know why there's a straggling thousand, because there was money already moved. But I'll certainly look into it more before we do anything with it and find out where that, where that should go. The clearing accounts, we're keeping those. Then there's a transportation benefit district we want to inactivate. That was a separate entity. And about, probably in 2016, that was moved into the general fund. That was allowed to be moved into the general fund and not be a separate entity. So for us, it's in the, in the streets fund. And the streets can, operating and construction fund.
Councilmember Woodard?
In 20 words or less, what is a clearing fund?
Clearing fund is like when we pay, pay any, you know, vendors or salary, it goes into the fund before it pays out. So it's just, it's a clearing account. And accounting is called clearing account.
Thank you. I have a question on the transportation benefit district. We put that into the general fund, not a street?
Yeah, it's in the street fund and street construction. Yeah, I said the general fund at first because a lot of cities, they just put it into the general fund. And sometimes they have streets in the general fund. But in our case, part of it goes into the street operating fund and part of it goes into the street construction fund.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I thought. It's not part of the general fund for us?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Then we have these private suspense funds and these other ones that we want to inactivate. We have a lot of snow calm ones that we do not use anymore. This housing affordability that is, that is not utilized in this fund. We pay that out of a separate fund. And consolidated investments, we don't use that fund. So what we want to do is add just one custodial fund. And then that will be used for all the activity that comes in and goes out. And again, this is not money that is the city's money. It's just held. It's a custodial account just held. And it comes in and then we pay it out, whether it's to the state or where we're usually different state agencies where we pay it out. And we want to simplify it and just add this account. So we're recommending, staff recommends that the ordinance with the proposed changes to the city funds is adopted.
All right. Thank you. Serke, do we have any further questions? If not, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And thank you, Serke and Caitlin. Appreciate the presentation. Most of it makes sense to me. I did have a question, though, around funds that we had voted on as a council when we went through the RFA process. So one of the things that we decided was that we were going to retain $50,000 of those taxes annually in order to be able to help support various, like, utility support for our residents. And so I guess I just wanted to make sure that that is accounted in some way, shape, or form, and didn't necessarily hear that as part of this presentation. So I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer that one. So those, there's no change proposed tonight for, for those, the $50,000 funds for the utility assistance accounts?
Where do they live, though? I guess that, like, they, they don't have a specific fund that we spoke about. And there was a fund specifically for, like, the garbage utility. So I guess I'm just curious where those live and if they should have their own fund.
Yeah. So it was in the special revenue funds. There was, it was 164. It was called the solid waste fund. And that is the discount program. And the revenues normally come into, solid waste comes into the general fund. And we do roll it up at the end of the year into the general fund. So we're recommending that it's a separate account in the general fund. It will still have the same balance. It will still be used. It'll be restricted to the discount program. So the, it will not change in that sense. Basically, the number changes on it from a-
Okay. So I think maybe that's, so that is a sep-, that's an agreement we have with waste management as part of our contract.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. So then there's a secondary source of funds, or there should be, that when we went through the RFA process and we made decisions as council around kind of the, the continuing taxation of our residents, we had, I think, decided, and I don't have it in front of me, so this is like rough memory. It's been a couple of years. But I think $50,000 was the amount that we had retained to keep on an annual basis versus, because we reduced our taxation as we've moved into the RFA. But we retained $50,000 annually in order to be able to provide more financial assistance to our residents. And I guess that is, I guess I'm, I'm curious where those funds live and if they need their own fund in order to be able to make sure that we are accurately retaining them and utilizing them and know where those funds are, you know, coming from and going to.
Yeah, tho- those, that $50,000 per year that was removed from what we gave back, essentially, as part of the RFA process, live in the general fund. We can certainly look at creating a new fund specifically for that. But right now, that's not part of the proposal this evening.
Got it. Okay. Fine, yeah, with the proposal that's in front of us then. And I would ask as a follow up, I think that would be a really helpful way to ensure particularly as we are navigating budget conversations in upcoming years, that that we understand that those funds were, were set aside for specific purposes. And also to know where we're at in terms of trying to ensure we have programs that meet the need of our residents. So yeah, I would love to have that come back at some point so we can vote on it.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that the, some of those funds, like the housing needs funds and the strategic reserve fund, they'll just change numbers and they'll be still restricted use. And it sounds like they'll also be special and self-balancing. So is that all, do I have that correct?
That is correct.
Great. Okay, that's where I had questions. Thank you much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Any further questions? Councilmember Woodard?
Not a question, just a comment. I, I just want to applaud you for the work. It seems like it's just getting more granular. And in a world where we don't want to get into the weeds, this has been deep into the weeds. And that's great. Because I, I give it in my report, but we did have our audit. And those weren't numbers you were in charge of. So I'm just thinking, man, this is, next audit's going to take five minutes the way you're doing this, which is what we need. So I appreciate the focus on transparency. I also want to echo Councilmember Murray's point. I would definitely love to keep track of that 50, especially at this point in time. So I would just say, whenever that can come back, it does have its second council member saying we'd like to hear that as well. Because it's never really clear how that process goes. Somebody says they want something and then we just do it or we don't. So I want to be clear. I want that as well. And outside of that, ready for making a motion if we're there, if anybody else has done.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. And yes, I agree. I think that that was a priority of council at the time. And we should solidify that and to ensure it's set aside. Okay. And and then it's clear how it's being used too. So we know that our, our residents are making use of the fund. And we have an idea of how, how well, if we need to improve communication or efforts or whatever. So I think that transparency on that would be good. And just in general, I think this effort is very, yeah, appreciated, great work. It is, I think, going to help us be more clear in understanding the flow of money in a lot of different areas. So rather than having multiple funds in different areas, being able to consolidate and put it in with specific line items and understanding how it's being used, I think will be very helpful. With, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the city's fund structures. Councilmember Woodard?
Watch this. I moved to adopt the ordinance amending the city's fund structure. I'm slow, but eventually I get there.
Well done, Councilmember Woodard. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll give it to the mayor for a second. With that, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance amending the city's fund structure, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations. We have adopted the, our ordinance amending the city's fund structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
All right. So with that, we'll move into the final parts of our meeting, the city manager's report. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mayor, members of council, just three things to mention tonight. Actually, one, Danielle Singson, our domestic violence coordinator, already mentioned, I wanted to highlight that we have the purple ribbon magnets on each of our patrol cars and in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I think that's a good thing. And I hope when people see that, they remember things that people in our community are dealing with. And hopefully, we can eradicate that one of these days. The expo at the pavilion is taking place tomorrow. That's a chance for live exercise for our lifeguards, live real-world scenario exercises for our lifeguard. So I think that's also a good thing. And then lastly, if I can read my handwriting here, all of the road striping is done. And we're working on the catch basins right before the winter weather hits so that the lines are nice and bright and the catch basins are free of leaves. And hopefully, everything works the way it ought to. So that's all I have. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, city manager. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to council liaison reports. And we will start with Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On the 19th, I attended the art show preview in this beautiful space. Always awesome to have the artists in here. And congratulations to everybody. The next day, on the 20th, I was able to make some time and come to Welcome Week, another awesome job by Art Commission and Partnerships. I believe that was also the school district as well as Snow Isle Libraries. That same day, I then went down into Seattle, was a guest with a group called Sage Leaders. Their goal is to get brown and black folks elected. Let's keep it simple. That said, I was on the elected leaders panel. It's an honor to do that. The next day was the 21st, and I was able to just talk about our beautiful destination city on a show called The Day with Trey. And then Wednesday, jumping ahead, I referenced it already, but congratulations to our city and specifically to our staff. We had our audit, I believe it was for 2022. And I will just tell you, they allotted two hours, the state allotted, state auditor's office allowed for two hours for this. And that was very intimidating. And I said, okay, I'll give it a try. And it lasted about 14 minutes. And I would say the conclusion, next steps, and you guys are awesome, took more time to share than the feedback they gave us on the front end, which is just to say thank you to the city. When I look back on those years and the time that we're doing right now, trying to catch up, it's just really a test to how amazing the staff is, that genuinely, it was a lovely experience. I don't think that that's how they get to say that very often at the state auditor's office. And then today, I, nope, I didn't do that today. I had to change a plan, so never mind. Instead, I will say on Saturday, if you're still, if you're a runner, but in our city, if you're not a runner, still come down, I'm encouraging you, the 5K for the Foundation for Edmunds School District, we actually are a partner with them. So their 5K is in the morning. And if you come down, I guarantee you, you will be shouted out because I will have a microphone and they can't stop me. So I hope you all can make it because there's a lot of people who come out. And this is our second time doing it in our area. And so in that regard- our second time doing it in our area, and so in that regard, if you can make it down, please do. And that will be the end of this report.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. Where's that race starting?
Oh, sorry. I, that is a great question. I know it's Ballinger Lake, and so I think it's going to start at the, at the center.
Oh, but at Ballinger?
Ballinger Lake, for sure, yeah, but I just know that answer since that's going to be, it's starting to stop there, but I don't know that one yet. I got the script today, so.
I attended the art show open ceremony, and I just want to give a huge shout out to the Arts Commission. They have many, many years of knowledge. I remember being on the Arts Commission years ago and trying to put together a project management plan on all the different details that go into putting on an art show. That's why I advocate for no term limits for our volunteers. Just to be able to put on a show like that of that magnitude requires many years of experience from our volunteers, and I just want to thank them all very personally that they did an outstanding job. There were so many happy people there, and the turnout was wonderful. The room here in City Hall was overflowing, there's people down the hallway, there was no place to sit, and they just, the artists felt very validated, and it was very professionally done. And so I want to give a huge shout out to all of them. And then last night, I was able to attend the candidates forum, and you didn't have to mention that, I'll just mention that, but I just wanted to thank everybody who turned out for that, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. All right, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On the 20th, I had a chance to attend Welcoming Week and the art show, and I will say big kudos to both the Arts Commission and our DEI Commission for putting on really amazing events. I loved that they were, you know, not co-located, but they were located in close proximity. I thought that that was a really great way to drive some synergy between those two events that maybe attract different groups in typically, and hopefully get people kind of checking out both. And so just, you know, big kudos to everybody involved in both of those projects. You know, I'm very proud of our city and then the work that we continue to do to make this a great place to live. Last night, we had our third in a series of conversations about our, with kind of our regional partners around recreation and specifically aquatic facilities. That is, continues to be an ongoing conversation that I think our, it's not even that I think, that our staff is shepherding really well. I've talked about it here before, but I'll continue to say it, because I know that not everybody watches every meeting. We know that we have a recreation pavilion that is very, very aged, and that we don't know how much longer we're going to be able to keep it going. That is not a unique problem that we have here in Mount Lake Terrace. We heard from a speaker from the North Bend area who was working with a pool that's in, like, the 80-ish year-old range, and, you know, so this is a, this is a challenge that, that, you know, communities are dealing with all over our region, as, you know, there were some significant federal investments 80 years ago, and then, you know, like 50-ish years ago, that led to a lot of these facilities being built, and there is not great sources of funds to rebuild them. And so we've seen them close, as is the case in Shoreline, and the cost to replace them is astronomical. I don't, I don't know how else to put it. I mean, Shoreline is looking at, one option that they're considering and going out to, to the market to get proposals on is just, it's a, it's not a regional facility, it's a local pool, it's not a recreation facility, it's just the aquatics, you know, and if we take out the cost of land acquisition, which was in the $20 million-ish range, they're still looking at like an $80 million project. And so I just, I, I want to make sure that I'm conveying those facts as we think about that path forward, because it is a challenging path forward. And again, I think our staff is doing everything they can to ensure that we look at the full breadth of options that are available. They have invited speakers in from all over the place who have, you know, tackled at different ways to both accomplish and honestly to, to run into roadblocks in accomplishing similar objectives in their communities, which I think has been really, really helpful. They have brought in partners from, you know, King County and Snohomish County and all of our neighboring cities and the, you know, Shoreline School District and the Edmunds School District, and all, all sorts of folks who, you know, might be interested and utilize these facilities. And so I just, I really want to commend our staff for all of the work that they're doing there to, to try to, to figure out what options may be possible to move forward. Timeline, as far as next conversations, it won't be until January, but I think there may be some questions for us as a council before then, and so obviously, you know, we'll bring those to you. When, when those, I think there's a, next steps is to develop some questions, so we're having similar conversations in each of kind of the decision-making bodies that are potentially could be, could be involved. And again, no, there's no decisions that have been made, this is not a, like, oh, we're headed this direction. It really is a wide net and trying to ensure that as many options as possible that could be on the table are able to be discussed. So I guess I just really want to make sure that both our council understands, as well as our residents understand, that we know that this is a looming issue. It is a really challenging issue to potentially navigate and find a solution for, but, but staff is working really hard to, to at least be able to lay out the options in front of us so that we can make an informed decision when we get to that point. So with that, I think that completes my report. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. All right, Councilmember Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you. On September 19th, I also attended the arts award ceremony. I helped emcee it, and then I helped work and volunteer my services for the week. The art show was open all the way from the 20th to the 27th. I did meet on the 20th, when we had our Welcome Week, I met sixth graders from Mount Lake Terrace Elementary School, and we looked at artwork. Actually, that was on the 22nd, Monday, I had to move the date, met with, well, I did, I'm sorry, I got a bad cold. I did attend the Welcoming Week, and, but on Monday, the 22nd, when I met the sixth graders at City Hall, and they came with their parents and looked at the artwork in our hallway foyer, and then went and looked at the art in the art show. I would also like to echo what Councilmember Sonmore said in thanking all the commissioners for running and all the, running the show and the volunteers running the show, and I also echo her saying, we shouldn't have term limits on commissioners in that we'd lose our expertise to put on a quality art show with only the city putting in-kind services in. So it really doesn't cost the city a lot of money when they're just helping bring equipment in, we set it up, and then they bring the equipment out. And so I think that's an important part of our city. We want a walkable city, we want things to walk to. And one of the things to walk to is the library, and one thing that's nice, once a year is we have a high-quality art show. So I'd like to keep that going. And remember, that was our 45th art show, and it started, I believe it started in the gymnasium at Mount Lake Terrace High School, and then it came over, and it has gone through a lot of development, and we're doing really well. I'd say we're better than Edmunds on their art show. So I'm very proud of the volunteers and the commissioners. So thank you, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. All right, Mayor Massimo DeWright, go ahead.
Thank you. On the, I have to go back to the... Okay, I'll go back to the 19th of September. Seashore Transportation had a joint meeting with the other two transportation forums, and we met at Sound Transit in, in the downtown office, and that was really, we had a really great presentation about how the transportation system was going to work when FIFA arrives. And, and on the 20th, I also attended the Welcome Week and the Art Show. I had to miss the, the art show opening the night before because I had a conflict. And on the 22nd, I also met with, at the art show with the Mount Lake Terrace Elementary School sixth graders. They have a little present, public display of their artwork in the city hall, and then they went to look at the professional art show across the street, and they were very excited, because they also had a scavenger hunt, too. And on the 30th, just the other day, I was invited over to the Mount Lake Terrace Plaza to hear Randy Gravel talk about his book, about the history of Mount Lake Terrace, and he was going to start doing those at the library in the future. So hopefully we can all, you know, go and support him then. On the 1st of October, which is yesterday, I attended in Linwood, the Scriber Place groundbreaking for 52 units of, units for homeless students of Edmunds School District and their families. Apparently, there are 700 students who are homeless at the moment, and this is only 52 units. This really shows you how, and it took five years for getting from an idea to the groundbreaking. So it's affordable housing units and units in general are very, very difficult to get started. This is a combination of housing hope and the federal, the state and county and local funders. There's a whole bunch of funders on this one, so I was, and from Mount Lake Terrace, we had a few people from Edmunds and Linwood, and I was proud to present Mount Lake Terrace there. And hopefully, we will learn from this so that we can see more of these, these kind of units getting built. And then earlier today, I attended a special conservation, conservation futures meeting to approve purchasing some air rights in agricultural property, so that development can't go on there, but it will continue to be agricultural property in perpetuity. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, so try and breeze through this so we can get out of here tonight. On the 19th, I had the Snohomish County Cities Executive Committee meeting where we were planning our upcoming dinner and talked about future activities, but our upcoming dinner as a reminder is October 16th, where we will be talking about some of the challenges we're facing on, with immigration and how we're handling ICE activities, et cetera, here in the Snohomish County region. We'll be hearing some, from some experts on dealing with that, so that'll help us as we move forward to encourage folks that are interested in that to attend. Then on the, that, later that evening, also had the art show award ceremony, and the following day, had the arts, arts of the Terrace Show and Welcoming Week, and I also want to echo the comments as far as the great work that our, our staff and our volunteers have put in to make these keystone events and activities here in our city, and the great, great work that's been, been done to make that come about. On the 24th, had the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee meeting, where we had briefings on community transit, human services updated on, on the counties, Snohomish County's Consolidated Housing Plan, heard from the Department of Emergency Management at the county level on the hazard mitigation progress that we're making, and the updated plan is available for public comment for the next month, I believe. If you need more information on that, let me know, I'd be happy to, and have some comments on the countywide mitigation plan, hazard mitigation plan, let me know, and I'd be happy to get you information about how to comment on that. We also had an update on the economic development team and tourism update from the Snohomish County Executive's Office and what's going on there. Then following day, had the Puget Sound Regional Council Operations Committee, followed by the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board meeting. And then on the, late, in the afternoon, had the, met with the city manager and our economic development manager and our new Mount Lake Terrace Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Ariel King, to talk about economic development projects and how things are coming with the chamber. Following that, had our city council, city finance committee meeting, and then our city council meeting. Then yesterday, had the Snohomish County Tomorrow Executive Committee meeting, and then earlier today, the mayor and I met with the city manager for our monthly rundown and updates. So I think that concludes my report. With that, I think we are ready to move on to the next agenda item, which is new business. Does anybody have any new business? Seeing none? All right, very good. I will look, happily call this meeting over, adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.